I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, I have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Gary.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, public comment. Larry Yelich.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
That's okay.
Name is Larry Goustad. I was here in, I think, the first part of November approached the school board about possibly naming the athletic field, football field, after one of our former teachers who passed away last year. I was kind of wondering what's been happening. I haven't heard too much. I've heard there's some controversy going on, opposition. I just would like to be, I've had a lot of calls from different students from year sixty-five on up, wondering what's going on.
We've been having some policies meetings on it. We're trying to develop a policy that will cover that.
It's on the agenda for new business as a first read.
Yeah, so what they've been doing is kind of looking at other schools in our area and just coming up with what will work best for us. And like Prin said, we have it on the agenda tonight for a first read, for us to review it.
Okay.
And that's kind of where we're at right now.
Another question I was gonna ask you, the tennis court behind the elementary school, that is school property, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
With the Owen Oster Memorial?
Correct.
I was wondering if there wasn't much controversy for something like that compared to this, or what's the difference? I think it was a good idea they named it after one.
That's one where there was, it came to the board for approval to do the fundraising to develop that court.
Yeah.
And that was approved, and then in the process of having that group form and doing the fundraising, the person behind it died. And so when they gave it back to us, they'd already named it. So the school didn't name it. It came to us.
Yeah, because right now we have a lot of former students who want to contribute to the fundraiser. But they just don't want to contribute yet. So we gotta go ahead, you know? They want to pay for everything. These former students do. I mean, the money is no problem for something like this here.
Well, again, I know we have the policy that they've been working on since this was brought up. And I, to be honest with you, I'd be lying, Larry, I haven't read it yet.
Okay.
So.
You mind if I stay and listen to it, or?
No, open reading.
No, hang out as long as you want, man.
Thank you.
Okay, is that it?
Yes.
Anybody else have any comments?
Okay.
Thanks. Consent items. Do we have a motion to approve the consent items?
So.
Go ahead, second.
Okay.
Motion by Gary, second by Mimi. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Discussion items, strategic planning, continuation.
I sent out the list of topics and didn't hear back, so if I could get a response as far as, you know, to whom it should be sent, if I did get a response from one board member as far as questioning some of the wording. And I didn't hear back from any of the others, should it go to all exchange users? But we need that to go out because we've got the March ninth secondary meeting, and we need to have it go out. And people have time to fill it out, so we get all the results back by March ninth, which is our second time to go through and look at all the results. Did you see the list?
I did. So are all those bullets gonna be included? Is that exactly what you're gonna submit to those folks?
And that's what the question is. Are those bullets, because I took it from the dots on the sheet.
Correct.
Are those, is that what you remember as far as, did I get, for some of them, I didn't use the wording that was right there. I tried to flesh it out because if it was, if I wrote right what's on the sheet, it wouldn't get the idea because there was more conversation about it. And so for some of them, I fleshed it out. Did I get the intent of the group? For others, the one board member that responded said that there were some that needed a little more explanation.
So I've been thinking about it, but I didn't, I didn't go through it very closely. But the first thing I was thinking was, is it the right time? Like, is it better to send it now, or is it better to have another meeting and form some ideas and get their input? What's the best time to get the input? And then the other thing that I wanted to do some research on, Luther College just sent out those, I don't know if you got that email, but they're doing a strategic planning and they sent it out to all their alumni or something. I got it, and it was like, we want you to be involved in this planning process. Click here for these questions. And I had it on my to-do list to click and see, because I was curious, you know, what questions they were asking to get, you know, input, because it sounds like they're going through a process. So I just, I don't know the right answer, so I don't know what the best, you know, what the best time is to get input and what should we get input on. Like, if they come back and say, yes, we agree with those strengths, was that good? Or should we say, these are the things we're thinking of. What are your ideas?
I think we need to open it up. You don't want to have a just, you know, an ended question.
Well, and that's, we have like an other, and then have room for one, one other. But if we just have, if we have it wide open, I'm, we don't have the manpower to actually tabulate wide open, because how do you, this person might word it this way, and this person might put these two together, and.
Well, I brought the stuff from when we did it before, and it's just people's text. I mean, and you just read through them, so.
You read through them, and you gotta, to really look at it, you gotta categorize it, you gotta, you've gotta look at what, because otherwise it's just an entire list.
Do you remember who we sent that out to?
I think it's a different teacher and a different site. It's just their, I mean, it's more just, it's their chance to contribute. Even if they, you know, maybe they don't feel comfortable telling their ideas to their principal, or, I don't know. It's just an opportunity for them to communicate with the board. We could do it multiple different ways. So I don't know the best approach. I just want everybody to feel like they've contributed, and I'd also feel like they have great things to contribute, so I'd like to hear that from them. I just don't know if, how to, how to best go about it.
I don't know, we talked about it in the meeting, I maybe missed some of it, but I thought we mentioned that we take those bullet points that we discussed, send them out to everybody, get feedback on them, and again, leave an open one for them. And I think they can give us feedback on each one of those if they wanted to, correct? I mean, if you put each one of those bullet statements and saying, this is what we're looking at doing, I mean, they can comment on each one of them if they felt like they needed to. Or they could put down what they would like us to look at. How do you have it set up? I mean, what are your, what are your thoughts?
If we put the bullets that were in that list of strength and had them choose their top four, or they could choose another, and then write in if they felt there was a strength we're missing, and then they could have it in the other, then we could have a list of, we could kind of rank what's there. Plus, we could see that listing if there are some other things that, as a group, we missed, so they'd have more input. It's just leaving it wide open and then trying to categorize and trying to see where the focus should be, because we can't do it all. We have to really look at honing where we should put our efforts, where we should spend our time to really build on those strengths. So what are those strengths that people feel we should build on?
I'd like to think the bullets we came up with covered a lot. I'm thinking that the, and there should be an other for what we missed, but hopefully it'd be minimal.
I mean, that's kind of what we agreed upon on that night, is we had the bullet statements, and then another. And then I'm sure they'll comment, you know, if they want to. You know, if there's something they want to comment on. You know, I don't think they should, you know, maybe you have that line in there, comment line. You know, have other, if you have other ideas, and then you just put it out, this is, these are the people that were part of the
Oh, yeah.
Conversation, and, you know, but maybe everybody should relook at them and come up with some ideas and send them to you by Monday?
Please.
So if there's some of those lines where you feel.
Look it over, and then if you want to look at, well, maybe she plans it.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's old, it's not really.
Yeah, but I mean, looking at that, there's not like a lot of bullet statements here that anybody.
It's like, what's, what is your, what are you most proud of from Houston schools?
What are the three biggest things you're proud of in the last five years?
There you go. Thank you.
You know, that type of thing.
Yeah, so it was to kind of get what they're, you know, most proud of.
What are the biggest challenges facing the district?
And it's really old data, so it's not really useful, but I thought the questions were good, so. I did think our session was great, by the way.
Yeah, I think it went really well. I really did. I think it.
Well worth it.
It didn't go on long. It wasn't all rambling.
Well, I like the idea of, you know, sending these out and asking people to pick their top three or four, and then giving them a line or two to add their own, or whatever. That way, it's not totally open-ended, but it does provide an opening for them to provide input.
Joe, who starts? So, otherwise, if you.
So if you could look through the list and see if, if.
You do want us to.
I'd like you to look through the list and, do any of them strike you as something that if you wouldn't have been at the meeting with us, is that statement confusing? Would, do you understand what that strength is? Do you understand what we meant by that opportunity, or do you understand what we meant by that threat?
Did you tweak it at all after you got the other commentary?
I have not, no, I have not. So I can, I can tweak after those comments, and I'll send it out again on Friday.
Yeah, I was gonna say, why, if you don't mind tweaking it, then send it out, because that way we.
But I do need you guys to come.
And then Monday, Monday, everybody should get back to you by Monday.
So you're, you're going to ask people, because it gets a little confusing when you say, when you're talking, let's just say weaknesses, for instance. You're gonna ask them, say, these are the weaknesses that we discussed. Which ones do you feel we should focus our attention on? Is that the way we're going to, I mean?
Well, I think a comment like you made earlier, in the context of strengths, what should we build on? In other words, what are you identifying? How will this be used to do that, comment like that for strengths, weaknesses, and so forth? To provide context.
For weaknesses, I mean, there might be one that, I can't remember any of them really off the top of my head. But there might be one that's big, and everybody agrees it's a big, but they might not think that's what we should focus on, because it might not be something we can change. I guess I'm just, when I was voting for the biggest weaknesses, I was questioning, what am I really voting for here? Am I voting for the ones I think we should try to focus on improving, or am I voting for, yes, that's the biggest weakness?
Well, that's, if we're going to survey people, we've got to be clear on what we really, what the results are going to show. And so that's why we need that conversation on, how are we going to be asking this question? Is it, you know, which strength do we feel is the, vote for the strengths you feel we have the biggest potential to build on? And which weakness do you feel is, is the weakness we should focus on improving?
Yeah.
Is it weakness we should feel on improving, or which is the biggest weakness? Because there's a really different answer there.
Because I, for instance, there might be one that says, we're a really small school. That might be a weakness. Well, yeah, it might be our biggest weakness, but we don't want to change that either, but your biggest strength. So, you know, I mean, is that what we should focus on, where there might be one where, you know, we can focus on? But, I mean, we can't change the fact we're really small.
We need actionable strengths, weaknesses.
Right, yeah, like which one you.
We're in a valley and surrounded.
Right.
Right, yeah. We live, we're in a rural setting. I mean, yeah, I mean.
It's gorgeous. We had someone come here today and had really not come out of the metro area much, other than to go north. And she said, wow, it is really pretty down here, you know, so. Okay.
Well, I'm looking over, write you comments, and if you get a lot of.
I will tweak by what the one board member's comments were, and then I will also put the way I'm gonna actually word the question, and you can comment on that as well.
Correct.
Because I, I think there should be something about the board is looking at these to focus on. Which ones do you think the board should?
Well, remember now, it's not just the board, because you wanna.
Who should they, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. I know what I want to say.
Are we on the right track, and what should the focus be on?
Right.
Because what we'll do is take those and then dive into them further and figure out ideas, right?
But I just want to make sure people know it's part of the leadership, too, it's part of this discussion, so they don't think we're, because that's not necessarily our job, is to micromanage the school. It's to, you know, oversee, to make sure we're doing the right, as a group, we're doing the right thing collectively, so. Okay, any other questions or comments on that? Again, read them, get them back to Prin by Monday, so she can get them out to the proper people. Thanks, Prin. Anything else on it?
Just March ninth. Keep that on your calendar.
Yep. Okay, old business, items for discussion and approval, twenty eighteen, nineteen school calendar. We had a lot of discussion last time.
As a teacher's, and once again, when I, I asked how you wanted it surveyed, and I got three responses, and none of them were the same, so.
So we, our decision to have year-round school is fine then with all the teachers?
No.
I mean, we can go round and round. I mean, it's tiki-tacky. I mean, let's just, to me, let's get it approved. We pick one, and we're bored, let's make a decision, then move on.
Yep, okay, works for me. And then next year, we can really plan, if you really want to survey parents and students, we can do that at the same time we're surveying the teachers.
What's the rush? It's like February, and this isn't this year's calendar, it's like the next year. What's the rush?
Well, they have to get everything kind of lined up, I'm assuming.
I don't know if we want to, I have had people approach me and ask me questions about it, wondering if there's gonna be a survey, so. I thought that was interesting that.
Well, this, but one board member said that, that board member said, and she didn't think that we were going to be doing the survey for this calendar we're talking about, because some of the teachers had already been, been asked, yeah. And so she said, I thought it was a future thing, and that's why I was just.
Well, it wouldn't be this coming school year, it'd be the following school year, the one we're talking about.
That's what you're talking about. She's saying that the teachers, the school board members, that it was not this coming fall, it was a year from now, right?
And that's what it is.
It's eighteen nineteen.
I'm talking seventeen eighteen, isn't it?
Eighteen nineteen. That's why I'm wondering, if we want to survey the parents, what's the rush?
It doesn't start until. A year from now.
A year from now.
Right?
Yeah, eighteen nineteen is not, because we've already approved the seventeen eighteen. It's, because we started last year, we started the two-year to crack, so that we could plan for, now, we need to have the testing calendar online by the first day of school, and so it's, we're looking way ahead.
I mean, it's almost like we're doing surveys for everything, you know? And I understand why we want people's input, but that's why people call you, you take their input, you make a decision, you know?
Well, we have yet to do a survey on anything.
On anything.
Yeah, we haven't, I mean, we've talked about it, but we haven't actually surveyed anybody, so.
When is this, we're gonna decide on this next?
No, this is, this is all, so we've seen it once, so you could decide on it tonight if you so chose to do that.
How many teachers, you said that it was like sixty-six percent one of the tight schedule versus thirty-three percent one of the loose. How many teachers responded to that survey? So it was a large amount?
Well, it's quite a few.
Yeah.
And then athletics pressure was tight.
Yes, yeah.
Did the principals ever weigh in?
Yes, the principals wanted the tight.
The teachers wanted the tight, so everybody pretty much wants a tight schedule, is what I'm getting from.
Yeah, all of the administration.
Right. I make a motion that we go with a tight schedule. Okay, again, a motion from Joe.
Second.
Second by Gary. Discussion, further discussion on it. And then we're gonna look at doing a survey for nineteen twenty-one. And when do we have to do that? We should make a note of that ahead of time, as opposed to?
That would go in December.
December next year, we'll put out the survey. And Mimi's statement.
December.
Yeah, this year, December. Do we go with the standard, I mean, the standard way we surveyed to?
If we can do infinite campus, and we want to survey parents, infinite campus seems to be the way to do it, now that we know we've got that opportunity.
And if we do a survey, what I'd like to have is have people have the opportunity to think about it, not just, you know, maybe pre-warn them, and if, you know, let them know, hey, we're gonna be doing a survey December fifteenth, it'll come out. We want the answers by this day type of thing, so it's not, you know, I need it tomorrow. So I just say, and so we have a consistent, another survey, so people know where to go do that survey time and time again, and.
Oh, yeah, on infinite campus, yeah.
If it's, if we're really just looking at doing, surveying the parents and not community members, if it's parents, then it's infinite campus would be the venue that makes sense.
Okay.
Okay, further discussion. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, policies for second reading. Any other major changes to these?
Very few changes. For a lot of them, the change is making sure that Tina Barnes's extension was correct. So there are several here that are there because Tina's extension changed. She is still the five oh four coordinator, but to contact her, we need a different extension.
So do we have a motion to approve the policies on second reading? Policy one oh two, four oh one, four oh two, four twelve, four thirteen, sixteen, four nineteen, four twenty-seven, five fourteen, and five twenty-one? So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, polls on easement?
I have received nothing from Marlene, so if we could just hold this over until we get something, it'll just kind of live there.
Until we find something else?
Mm-hmm.
We don't have a, no timeline on this anyway, right? Correct?
Yeah.
Okay, new business. Items for discussion and approval, policy for first reading, policy eight ten, naming rights, memorial policies.
This is in draft, draft form. And in looking through it, there are some parts, and it's not showing up there, that were in yellow, and, oh, there. We still have that line in yellow. We have taken different pieces and parts of different policies. One of the things that we're doing is looking at having the naming rights policy and the memorial policy as one policy. A lot of schools have one or the other, or both, and one's in the eight hundred series and one's in the nine hundred series. But it doesn't make sense to have, have the two policies, because there are so many similar things between naming something and having a memorial for it. So for our group, it seems to make more sense to put it into one. So that's the line, the yellow line, that the public memorial activities may be appropriate for large-scale events. They have the potential to cause trauma for students and are therefore not permitted. We kind of grappled with how that was worded. It's in most of the policies that we saw, but it's all written in different ways. So, Michaeline, could you speak to that, too?
Well, I think, like Prin said, this is in draft form. We've gone around, we've done a lot of looking at policies in place in other school districts. There is no model policy. We're trying to craft something that provides policy guidance to the administration, and then allows them to develop procedures. And this one, since, you know, we had to just sort of think about what are all the situations that might come before the school district for naming rights or memorials, and this, you know, a large-scale event. You know, you talked to counselors, you reached out to, the counselor groups in the state have had lots of challenges and questions to memorial policies because of the challenge to helping students to deal with potential crises that could fall under this policy. So I think I had still raised a question. I think our committee needs to sort that out. We'd like the board's input on all of this language.
Because it was, do we even, do we need that in there? Is it, and that's where we're, some of us feel that, yes, we need that. And so what's defined as a, do we need to then define what a public memorial activity would be?
So can you explain the yellow a little, one more time to me?
That's the line that we kept writing and rewriting, is how it worded.
Yeah, explain it to me maybe a little more.
This one, I think the policy and the research that we did that probably had the most poignant story with this one was at Byron, and what they dealt with after the death of a student. And there were memorial activities where they brought a huge rock in and painted the deceased student's name on the rock, and then there were, there were flowers and other things brought in. And so then the counselors had to deal with every time the kids walked into school, they saw the huge rock, and then they were just sobbing, because they kept looking at that, and there was tears. And so then they decided to have this, like, singing around, and it was, it went on and on, and there's grief, and then there's the trauma from the grief. And dealing with the grief is an important thing for the school, but stopping the trauma from the grief is also important for the school. Does that kind of explain?
Yeah.
So we have to read through it.
To me, that makes sense, I mean.
Did you, when you originally brought this up, I thought you said there were three kinds?
Yes.
What's the, so you said naming rights and memorial are one. What was the third?
There's, there's, there's two types of naming rights and then memorial.
So they're all three in this?
They're all three in this. We wanted, we wanted this to be, we didn't want anything disjointed. And what it seemed to us is if we separated them out into two different policies, you could kind of get some contradictory language if you changed one and didn't look at the other one at the same time. And so that's why we thought if we consolidate them and address all that, those situations at one time, then we were sure that we would be more consistent. There's naming rights in consideration, meaning that someone came in with a pile of money and said, we want this, we'll pay for this new building, we'll pay for this new wing, we'll pay for this remodel or addition, but the stipulation is that the name goes on it, that we get to name it. And that's kind of what happened with the Owen Oster Court. That the money came in, and we didn't have the policy yet, but we realized as we were going through it, that really was kind of a naming consideration, because that was a name that they said goes with it. But the stipulation was, we'll pay for it. Then there's name in recognition, and that, there's no money that goes with that. That's when somebody just requests to have a facility or. or a part of the school named after someone for the meritorious service.
Select the Arlie or Keating?
Well, it sounds like, you know, Arlie's could be a hybrid because Larry said they are planning to provide funds.
The funds go, what? That's, that's, that's the other thing that we'd have to, and that's, the policy has to address that. As far as how we, as a school, the guidelines for deciding the value of that facility and, or deciding the value of that addition.
Or whatever it may be.
Whatever it may be. And then the other thing is the memorial. And memorials are scholarships, perpetual awards. Some do trees and benches. And as we were talking through it, we've had a ton of trees over the years. And when they die, it's always a question of, okay, who's responsible for replanting it? And so we looked at what other people have done in their policies. And that, in going through what the school counselor's blog and some of the other comments from other schools that have gone through it, it's just don't, don't allow for the plantings. There's just live memorials.
So is this encompass, like, the awards that they get in the spring too then?
It could, yeah, if somebody wants to.
We're opening up a big can here.
Or are we opening up a can? Or are we finally providing procedures and guidelines for a can that's already there? And that's, because if somebody comes in and said, I wanna give this scholarship, and right now, we don't really have a mechanism to say yes or no. So far, we've just been saying, okay.
We'll still address each issue as it?
Each individual case by case, yes, yes.
Does this also have an out clause? That if something else comes of late?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. That's all the policies we saw had out on both sides.
Oh, right.
And.
Right down in it, there's termination of naming rights and limitation.
And one thing that has been in here, it, most of the policies have a wait of three to five years. That was kind of the range we saw after someone has died. There's the wait of three to five years after death before any name is attached to that because of the death. Just because it's.
But they could do something like a scholarship or something earlier.
Yeah, the perpetual award earlier. But that three to five years seems to be kind of a waiting period that's been in most of them. And that was in here for a while. And to be honest, that has gone in and come out and gone in so many times. I'm not sure if it's still even in this. This hasn't gone to the lawyer because we thought, when we finally send it to the lawyer, we want it to be what the board and the policy committee really feels is going to be the language that will fit us the best and then have the lawyer weigh in on it. Instead of having the lawyer weigh in on a draft and then have us change our mind and pay the lawyer a second time. I'd like to pay the lawyer once. Actually, I wouldn't like to pay the lawyer at all, but we'll need to on this one.
So for in consideration versus in recognition, does it follow a different process?
The procedures right now are separated out. Instead of part of the policy, the procedures are at the very end. And those procedures would be in, right now, administration offices. However, there's talk about putting them back in to the policy again. And therefore, you never really lose them because sometimes when you separate the procedures out, then they get morphed and changed, and then you don't really know what the procedures are anymore. So there's still that conversation that's going on. And right now, the procedures are the same. Whether it's, basically for memorial, for in recognition, in consideration. The procedures are the same for all of those.
I think what, speaking on my role in the policy committee, what, you know, we've tried to move forward on this. The committee that has met has included Todd, you, and Ron and I.
And Rick.
And Rick. And we'd like your input and your questions. What in the language confuses you? I mean, with Joe's question there, I think going back to that highlighted area, we should just actually remove that highlighted area and just say, those memorials will not be permitted. Because that's essentially what that part says.
Yeah.
Right?
So do we need the cause?
Instead of saying the opening, just say that public memorial activities are not permitted.
Except Veterans Day is a public memorial activity. And I don't want to have a policy that, that's also why this group has.
Well, then just maybe, though, public memorial activities may be appropriate. They also need to, they need to follow a procedure.
Right.
Instead of delineating, put it in a procedure that allows that to be an administrative decision to some degree, like so many of the other things are. So that, that kind of input helps us go back and look at it and try to revise it or take your suggestions. There's some of the procedures, I think there's some of the information that's listed on the current form as it's there as procedures that really belongs as part of policy, the things Josh was mentioning, the outs, the termination of naming rights and so forth. But the procedures, as a policy committee, we've tried to have, here's the policy language. It doesn't do all, unless it's a model policy, we don't put all of that cross your Ts and dot your Is. We provide an umbrella to give a procedure, which can be changed without changing the whole policy all the time. So that's what we need to do, is separate what's policy, what's procedures, and are you comfortable with what's, what's there, the guidance that's there?
And in looking through, and in, in looking through policies that are out there and policies where people have made comments on the policies and the hindsight-type comments as far as we wish we would have. Most places are now saying that naming rights for recognition, they don't do it anymore. They have just said, we don't do naming rights for recognition. They'll do naming rights for consideration, and they will do naming rights on memorials, but they don't do naming rights in recognition anymore. And so that's one of those where, I know Ron, who can't be here tonight, really would like consensus from the board. Is that the way you'd like us to go? Because right now, that's for the policy committee, after the research we're doing and looking at what's happened in other schools and looking at why other schools have written their policies the way they have. That's where we're leaning.
So when you were saying, when Mike Lean was saying, the policy, and then you're looking at adding the procedures as part of the policy or keeping them separate? Mike Lean was saying that it's nicer to have them separated, correct? That we're kind of saying?
Well, we kind of have made a, because we have other things, like donations and fundraisers, that there's, there are procedures. So there needs to be a, you know, the procedure needs to be amended or attached to it, but it's a separate book.
Right, so it can be altered.
So it's just referred to the procedures. And they're all in the same, they reside in the same office with the same.
Right.
Because we've lost track of some procedures. And some procedures have become policy, which is not.
Right, no. Procedure should be separate, but we need to come up with a mechanism to make sure that the procedure hangs with.
Well, it falls under the, the language of the policy.
Right, exactly. So does anybody else have any more comments on this first read?
Did Crin want the answer from her?
Ron, yeah, Ron feels it's important to get the board to weigh in.
Naming rights for, what did you call it again?
For recognition.
So that would say that the Arlie or Keating would be the goal?
No, not necessarily. Well, it sounds like there would be some in consideration because there's some funding associated with it, right?
Then that would be the in consideration and the funding mechanism. But just naming something after somebody isn't something we would do.
So the Arlie thing, if it wasn't with the money, you couldn't do it?
Well, it could be a perpetual award.
A perpetual, yeah.
And a memorial.
I get it, but I'm just talking about this Arlie thing.
So going back to, right now, the way the draft language is in section four, naming rights in consideration says, the contributions are at the discretion of the school district and must account for a significant portion of the facility to be named. We don't know what the significant portion is. So that's, that's a decision that you can leave or we can, the board can say, what is that significant portion? Can we?
There are other policies that have it defined as far as a percent of the estimated cost. There are other policies that leave it open to their director of finance in, after consulting realtors or other experts.
So you're, you're significant amount, you're talking tens of thousands of dollars?
Well, it depends on the facility to be named.
Well, it's a football field. I'm assuming it's gonna be tens of thousands of dollars, right?
Building a new football field.
If you can build a new one, yeah.
Well, going back to Arlie or Keating, name the rights, what are you thinking of for a significant amount then?
And that, Joe, that's something that it, as a committee, we had to separate ourselves from the request that's coming right now. Because we wanted, we wanted to have a policy that fit.
You know, that makes good sense.
Now and the future, and it's gonna fit for us no matter what happens, when it happens. And so we, we kind of made a conscientious decision to say, okay, we're not, we're not going to discuss the latest request because we need to make sure that we've got a policy that fits us. And then once that policy is created, then, then we know that we've got something we can stand on if somebody comes to us and when they come to us with it.
And then give them, these are the options.
These are the options with which we feel are good for this.
And if you have something that falls under these categories.
Yep.
You can, this is a procedure on how to do that.
From, just looking from the sidelines, it seems like, I like that. It seems like, what can we do to improve on the school? And then, so it's something new and improved for the school and a name associated with it. So it seems like a good thing to speak.
So if Ron would pay for half the elementary school cafeteria, it could be named for Ron, for Ron.
If he wants to cough up the cash, that, we went round and round on that one too. Because then I said, hold on a second, what if, can we turn down money if it's somebody that we don't want to have that name on? And it's so, it was.
Well, it still has to go to the board. I mean, because you're still looking at it.
Each individual item.
Yeah, I mean, that's why you have a board to make that decision. But then you'd have to look at it well.
But then you're not looking at the past years of service or anything like that. You're looking at monetary going forward.
Well, that's why it's separated. It's different, everything's gotta be looked at differently and what's all involved. It's just a lot.
Because we, it's really, it was much easier to put a value on money than it was to try to put a monetary value on service. Because who's to say whose service is more? And we, we just, that's the one where we just grappled. Because who's to say that this service is more than this service or more than this service?
So what does Ron, Ron doesn't need anything from us right now at this moment in time?
No, he would like to know as a board if there is consensus that we are going down the right path to say that there is no naming rights for recognition. Because right now, the way the draft policy is written is that when it's just talking about recognition and naming something that's already here, something that's not gonna get improved, just, it's already there, putting somebody's name on it.
But now approached by a separate group asking for that, and that's completely different. You're not just, I mean.
Well, I think even the group they may look at now, because we're kind of putting something together well, maybe they may look at a different approach. You know what I mean? They're going off of maybe what their perception was.
Of what was done.
Of what was done in the past. And you know what I mean, not knowing.
What I feel I hearing is that the, I'm keeping it separate. The Arlie or Keating, whoever we pick comes forward, they're basically, we're saying no to that unless they give us a large chunk of money that we can use to upgrade the facility or maintain it at the level that we want it to maintain. That's a significant amount, right? So, and that's the approach that we feel as a board we're going for, you know, then I'll think about it and decide. But I just feel that that's, that's where you're going from, right?
Yeah, but it doesn't, we're trying to develop memorial-type, memorial-type options.
And I get that, I just wanted to make sure, I agree with you, that's where you guys are going. I don't want a sugar collar, that's where you're going, right?
That's where we have gone. Because even with things in the past, there have been upkeep costs, and that has not been taken care of or written in. And that's, you know, so that has cost us, and so we're trying to offset that. Should we go forward? Then are we taking care of, I like the way Mimi said it, looking at improving facilities and then maintaining that improvement as well.
And it doesn't have to be costly. It doesn't have to be in addition to the elementary school. There's walkways and other things, I mean, those are examples, right? And so it would be something creative and maybe it's by the football field.
So if a football field came forward with a $5,000 payment and said, I want the naming rights for, we'll throw on a sidewalk, you're not gonna allow that, are you?
That would go through the procedures and the.
I know, I'm not saying, to me, that's not a significant amount is what you're looking for.
The board could probably.
I mean, I don't know, maybe I'm throwing this out, but if someone were to come in and say, I'm gonna pay for a new scoreboard and maintain it, and you know, here's $10,000 for a scoreboard, and why my name put on it, I'm thinking the board may look at it and say, well, let's think about that. Because first of all, we need a scoreboard. And then is there gonna be money to maintain the scoreboard? And they have to be under the understanding that that scoreboard, the last 10 years, after that, that scoreboard comes down and that naming right is gone and somebody else, unless that person wants to come back in and do it.
Right.
So I think that is something, you know, or a section of bleachers, somebody decides, you know, hey, I wanna do a section of bleachers with my name on it. I'll pay for the bleachers and the upkeep of those bleachers for the next whatever. And they're, we're gonna allocate funds for that, you know, and put the name on it. You know, that type of thing, right?
We're trying to write a policy that makes things more, more black and white and takes out the gray area.
I get it.
Or they wanna do a scholarship for a specific sport person, you know, and they, ongoing every year, because I think there's some people that have done that for different scholarships, right? That is what you're talking about, correct?
And even with the scholarship, that's one where, okay, for, is this a one-year? Is this, is this?
Oh, yeah, exactly. But what I'm getting at is, I think, the people that are looking at, utilize, that have come to us with this question, I think this is gonna give them some ideas and some guidance on what's available, not shoot them down.
We don't wanna shoot anybody else.
Well, you know what I'm saying, Crin, it's one of these things.
We wanna make sure that.
These are the areas that we're looking at. And again, this is a draft. This is something we have to look at and decide.
So do we have, could Ron really wanted to know each thought as far as consensus?
Well, I'm a no, but I'm just one person, one vote, so.
And you're focusing on the in recognition piece of?
Right. Do you feel that the policy committee is going down the right road there?
I would support that.
Support not having the in recognition?
Yes.
Okay. I'm supportive of that as well. I think that, I'm probably simplifying it too much, but someone who has a large impact, I think that the money will naturally come to help for in consideration. So I think that we're not. So I think that we're not excluding anybody, I know I'm oversimplifying it, there'll be cases where that won't happen, but if there's a teacher that's been here for a long time and has impacted a lot of people, the community, would probably rally around raising some funds, just like with the courts, you know, for a new scoreboard or whatever, and be supportive in that way, so.
So it could be the Arleyerki Memorial Scoreboard.
Yeah, or, yeah, whatever.
I guess you just have to decide, so that $10,000 is a good example. Are you gonna say you need to raise the 10, and then you're talking about that maintenance? But now in the same sense though, it's something that we're gonna use and maybe we could, then each, each situation is different.
That's why you have to look, talk.
But there'd be, there's a form, there would be a form developed where the, the party coming in to make the request would, you know, what is it, a sidewalk?
Well, if you're gonna do it, you don't wanna do it where down the road. If it, you know, you're doing somebody, whatever it may be, a memorial, it's something you wanna upkeep, I'm assuming.
Yeah, that'll be the toughest one to, that's the most open.
To go away, or look like, you know, what, down the road, you know, whether it be anything.
And that's the other thing that Mimi brought up that I remember, it triggered from the counselor talk. That in consideration can't be tied to a, wasn't it a student? So that the families of students that had money can't come in for consideration for a student that's died where there's another family that didn't have the money to do that for their student that died. And so it's, it's, students are, right, that's part of that
Case by case.
The case by case, that it's, it's just not, it's not allowed for students' deaths.
But they can do a scholarship?
Oh, sure.
Cause they do, right?
Yep, yep.
It's very, those are wonderful, by the way.
Yes, they are, but it, it's one of those where, as I said, we've been doing a lot of research. Okay, so we've got, Mimi has voted, Joe has voted, Tom?
I think you're going down the right path, just like I said, I wanna sit down and review it closer.
I, I would also like to know whether you think there should be a wait period and what that wait period would be? Because we had it in and we had it out, I don't think it's in there now. Three years, five years, one year, no years?
I'm in agreement on the wait period, three years.
Three years?
I'd have to say with Joe because I think you see these people that do stuff out of a moment of whatever it may be. Emotional moment, where later on down the road, you might, they might say, well, I wish we'd have done this. Where we have time to think about it, and it's a process, it, you know, we'd like to do some, what are our options? Take the time and if it's a requirement for whatever.
Maybe, I think it's way too long. If somebody came to Well, I don't know, if somebody came to us and someone died and they had in their will that they wanted to build us a new theater, we're gonna say, nope, we gotta wait three years.
Three years is long.
I mean, that just seems ridiculous.
Three years, it'd probably take three years to get that all in planning.
Well, you wouldn't be able to start for three years.
Well, you'd have to plan it anyway, it'd be three years.
I think it's too long, and I think, you know, if, if we receive, I don't know, it just seems strange to receive a large monetary gift and say, oh.
Well, I think if
It's too soon, you come back in two years, I mean.
No, they're waiting for you. Okay, and Josh and Michaeline, we need your vote on the, we've got two consensus things going at once here.
I think we're going down the right path.
Okay, Josh?
I agree.
Okay.
And I, I see, I see the value and I wait, and maybe we can talk about the length of it. And I understand Mimi's point on that, that's each situation by situation.
Maybe it's different wait periods and different circumstances, like if it's a perpetual award, maybe it is, maybe it's Okay, I don't know.
Well, because the scholarship, you already said earlier, that that's something that you can do tomorrow.
Right.
Exactly.
You know, if that's what you wanna do.
But in Mimi's example is a little different too, it, that's a gift to the district for a purpose.
You can stay in a, in a calendar fund until three years.
Well, I just mean, it's almost two different, it's two different things.
It's not a big deal.
It kind of is.
It's not like it's gonna not, gonna happen.
It kind of is a big deal, I mean, if I, if I wanted to, if I, in my will, wanted to give money and, you know, I mean
That may not be enough money. I mean, even, or if you gave us a million dollars to say, hey, I'm gonna build an auditorium, I want you to use that money for that, well, you know, we put it in the bank and we start the planning process. You know, yes, we will, it's not, I, I think we look at it like, okay, well, we'll do it, but yeah, there's a process to that. We have to go out and get this, and we have to go out and get that, and you know, all that stuff takes time.
It could sit in a trust fund for three years until it's open.
Then build it.
Gary, wait, no.
Something to think about.
Gary.
Okay, and Michaeline?
I think three, in general, I'm kinda open to both, I think it needs to be, well, I don't really wanna, I
Right.
We're not making a final decision right now.
I'm not sure, I think a wait period is better.
A wait period is necessary, timeline, we can decide.
Okay, sorry to be squishy on that.
Well, it just, we have really been grappling with this, as you can tell.
Yeah, we still are here, so.
Yeah.
If you, an organization, the Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation, has done a lot of like, this sort of not naming rights, but of planning and, you know, gifts of, from people and how those are used and how they're distributed, and it might be interesting to ask their opinion on waiting the three years. I mean, there is a lot of groups that would encourage you to gift the, you know, organizations that would like to be gifted in somebody's will.
You're talking about a planned gift?
Yes, on, on death, yes.
Right, but that, that's a planned gift? In consideration, that, that's not, you know, nothing about it, and then there's just like
There's, we do have a policy on gifts and donations to the district. It's the district, the district gets to decide how the money is spent.
Right.
It, the person giving the money cannot dictate that. That's, that's the district's right to make that determination, isn't it? I'm pretty sure.
If it's just, if it's a, if it's a monetary gift, yes.
I guess since we're just, since we're discussing it, it might be worth it to reach out to them because I think as a district, we should encourage people if they would like, if there is somebody in the area that would like to give us money for a theater, for instance, you know, I mean
Cafeteria?
I would love to encourage that and think about that, and if somebody approaches us, what would we do? And I know that that group does things like that, they, you know, so they would be kind of the people I would look to, to what the policy is. But I would, you know, I would hate to have somebody approach us and then say, well, actually, we won't do that, or we won't do it for three years. I mean, I just don't know how to respond to that, but I think that's behavior we would love to encourage, in my opinion, so.
Somebody come to you, some cash.
I would like to know, Mr. Chair, what you would like us to do? Would you like
Well, I'd like to
Prin to rework this based on the conversation here, would you like the committee to meet again?
I would like to have everybody look at it, write, you know, some thoughts on it, you know, I mean, I haven't had a chance to read through it. Again, you'd mentioned that, yeah, highlighted area, reworking that, and then bring it up again, but let's have a timeline on it. I don't want it sitting out there for, we've already had it out there for a long time.
It's seven o'clock.
Thank you for blocking it, or whatever that was. You know, are you planning on having a committee meeting between now and the next board meeting?
We had, but we can.
You know, is that what you're, I mean, I think we need time to look it over, just maybe
Well, we can put it on for a second reading and then if it needs to go back to the policy committee. But the second meeting reading means you need to put forth
Right, there has to be, yeah.
Your suggested inclusions or changes, right? And how, what makes sense to do that, just bring them up at the meeting, forward them to Ann, so that they can be included.
Well, these, forward that to me because it, it's, it's actual like policy writing, so then
I'd say forward your suggestions to Prin before, when's the next, the next meeting's on the
March 2nd?
2nd. And the week, Friday before that is the
Well
Monday, Monday before that. What's Monday before?
End of February.
Like 25th or something?
27th.
27th.
27th is Monday before.
So if you got it by the Monday before that?
Yeah.
Would you comment? Let's do that. Okay, any other comments?
We can't ratify it until it goes through legal as well.
Right.
Because this isn't one where we got, when, where we got a monetary
But I don't want it hanging out there forever either, I think you all want it out there.
Tom, may I ask a question?
Sure.
No, what you're saying now, this naming rights for like Arleyerki Memorial Field is, it's a no-go right now.
Well, it is.
Yeah, for the existing field, it's a no-go.
If it's an existing field, yes, unless you're building something.
I think you're making a big mistake for the things that Arley did for this school over the years of his service. Bringing in all these concerts to bring money into the athletic department, using some of his own money to sponsor it. I think you're making a big mistake.
Well, there's options there, I think you need to read through that first.
Nobody's contesting everything Arley did. Nobody is, 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 is saying that Arley didn't do absolutely phenomenal things for, for the, the school and the community. He did, that, that's not, that's not being contested in the least. But we, we need to create a policy that's going to fit every situation going forward. And we need to, to do what's best for all situations and, and all members of the community.
But this isn't, there, that is still an option though.
No, it isn't, unless they give a monetary fund.
Well, but that's what it sounds like they're willing to do.
Not, not the, not the level you're talking about.
It would have to be for some
See, I missed, I wasn't up, I wasn't here, that was before the year, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't see what they were planning or what was proposed in that exact situation.
I don't think anything's been proposed, nothing's been proposed.
We haven't got any proposal from anybody on it, as far as what their thoughts were.
But my impression is what you, I, I don't, I mean, and I'm maybe not in the loop like I should be, but I think if they work with us and we can come up with some solution, can't we?
Can we ask?
I don't believe there's a solution.
Can we ask him what?
Why is there no so, Tom?
Because they're not coming up with $10,000 for the foot, he wants naming rights on the football field.
Just put a sign up in Memorial, Arleyerki Memorial Field, that's we wanna name the field. What's the name right now, Houston Athletic Field?
I don't know.
We don't even name it.
We even have a name on it?
Mr. Football Field.
Yeah.
Football Field. Let's all name it after, see, there you get a gray area again, it's not renamed right now.
No, but then who's to say that, that, and I'm not discounting that Arley's done, did a lot of very good things for Houston. But there's, there's also the, if, you know, who's to say that that's, it shouldn't be the
Pete Peterson.
Pete Peterson, Roger Dory, but there, there's all kinds of other names that, that people said, well, it should be this, it should be that. And it's just, at this point, they all did, they, we have had a benefit of having an absolute bounty of people who have been generous and hardworking and caring and, and really have given their all for this district, they've given their all for this community. And, and to say this person has given more than this person and gets the naming right, I, I'm not sure how as a board, we can say, yes, that person's better than everybody else.
All those questions never happened until I approached the board for asking about naming rights. So none of this, none of these other names ever brought up until now.
Actually, this did start back when we got the Owen Osgard Court. And so there, there were those conversations as far as, hold on a second, how, you know, those conversations have been bubbling for a while. So it's, your request did precipitate us saying, oh, we do have to deal with this now.
Larry, is your group, if you went back to them and discussed, is there a certain something at, like, not specifically the scoreboard, but that as an example, is there, would your group be open to the naming something or in honor of Arley, you know, something very prominent, something useful, something, is there, could you go back and, I don't want you to walk away saying, wow, this is ignorant and they're saying no to, you know, but Prin has a valid point about other
I could approach the people, somewhere in Minneapolis, some live on a state, you know, there was a contact in me. They wanted me to approach the board because I'm the closest person for it.
Understandable.
And
I mean, I would think
There's some things on there like this highlighted thing.
Well, that's a different situation.
Yeah, I mean, I just don't believe it at all. It's time for people to grow up, you know, we've seen so much of this stuff going on these last couple of years in the country. Not to pertain to this, but it's time for the people to start growing up.
Well, I think what you should do, Larry, is, like I said, we're just working on this policy.
Right, yeah.
Talk to your group of people, and, and these people may have a different thought than what you, you know, I mean, as far as when they say this, the naming rights of something, they may be up to doing what we have discussed here. These are some of the options that are available, go back.
This is the only option they told me that they wanted to see so far.
Yeah, and again, because that is usually the first thought in their mind, is I want my name put on this. Well, you know, so does 12 other people, and who do we pick? Put everybody's name in a hat and draw, you know, that's, and I don't mean to say it that way, I mean, cause I agree with you whole Arley and Arley's stuff, but, you know, when we have the other field and what we did with that, there was, it was something different, something new. You know, and it was a fun, they did a fundraiser, they built something, all of that. So, you know, I, I would have to say, if you go back to the group of people and ask them and say, these are some of the thoughts, what do you think? Cause in reality, I think that would be even better in my mind than just something, you know, I don't know.
After, after your final, after your final draft is done, could I get a copy of it?
Oh.
To send to the people?
Yeah, this is all public information, you can get a copy of it right now, the way it sits.
Once it's finalized, it'll be put online and everyone will have, all of our policies are, great reading.
But don't, don't stop that thought, just go back and say, we need to redirect it cause, I mean, we still wanna shine a spotlight on Arley's efforts, we're just saying we can't broadly, you know, and that example is for a specific exam, a different, this policy is being a huge, covering a lot of topics and this Arley is just a specific. But say for instance, a library, you wanna name our library, well, instead you do the bookcases, like, you know, this is a bookcase after such and such.
Well, if you're gonna do a policy, in my own opinion, put it on, there's no name after nobody for anything, no matter how much money you donate for anything. You can't go, name the library after somebody, name the gymnasium after somebody.
I have to mention too that, you have to have a white felt clean.
Make it plain, there's no name for it.
We've added that one, we have, we have gone, this is this Rubik's Cube, and we have turned it and twisted and, and tried to look at absolutely every side, and every time you turn it, it just, it changes that face to a different color, and, and we're trying to get it so it fits us, and we know that it's the right way to move forward, and we know that we're on a really solid foundation.
There were several schools that adopted, just as you're saying, and they just said, the mission of a school is to educate students, not primarily to recognize individuals. I mean, it's like, this is a public school owned by the public, not by individuals. And so there are school districts that do that, and like Prin said, we're trying to make something that fits because we have been the beneficiaries of very generous and hardworking people, so.
And, and that's why we didn't feel we could just say, no name for anything, because that
Cause we've got some things named already too.
And we've got some things named, and that just seems so cold.
So, anyway, we're struggling. So the input and the conversation is helpful, as we try to get there.
As you see, it's, we just spent probably 40 minutes on this one item. So it's not been an easy path, to this point, and we're not even done yet.
The policy has met
So.
I've met three times, I think.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll continue on with that policy.
But thank you for allowing for consensus.
Okay, announcements, important events?
Last week Last week was National School Counselor Week and we did, um, different notifications for that and we've got, uh, some, four phenomenal counselors who work in our district. Next week is School Board Recognition Week and Becky Parabeck is getting some stuff put together, so watch our website. And I, I want to publicly thank all of you for all that you're doing for our district and our students. And then School Bus Driver Appreciation Day is February 22nd, it has been, um, set by Governor Dayton and so we are going to also have, uh, the appreciation for the school bus drivers on that day as well. So that's, it's just, February seems to be appreciation month.
Okay, meeting and committee updates?
Uh, Caledonia Cooperative, I, did you get the handout to each of them or did you put it on? Okay, there, that's what we talked about, that's what Caledonia has with Spring Grove right now. In looking through that, they wanted us to consider, and so we said we'd bring it back to the board, consider just adopting this, um, with, um, Houston in there in place of Spring Grove. But in looking through this, um, I, I have some real questions about it for the, right now, we've got one student participating in girls soccer and one student participating in boys soccer. And using this financial arrangement, each one would be a total of $2,310 if we followed this arrangement.
They also, uh, looked at the way we were doing it, where we supplied some things and, and they were open for that, those ideas too, to continue kind of the way we were doing it.
Were they?
I believe so.
I didn't get that.
For wrestling?
Yeah, for wrestling they did.
They, they said that we have to do the same thing for anything?
No, they talked, they talked about the, us supplying a coach, us being on the interviews for their coach, having a match in Houston, and, uh, I mean, that's pretty much what we do now.
They did have a board member that did say they wanted the same agreement for everything though.
Yeah.
So they were both.
I think, I think we talked to him on the side and, you know, I think we, we could talk him into it. I don't think, I think he thought he had more participation in some other sports too.
I think that one person did. But there again, then we need to look at, um, if our, if we're going to do it, this, you know, any way we're doing it as far as participation, we're not, if we're looking at doing this way, then we need to look at what we're giving them also.
Oh, yeah.
Because some of the conversations we've had in the past with this online school that we've been doing with the seats, and what are we getting in return type thing, I mean, if we're going to start shuffling money around, we need to look at the whole.
And, and that's what I'm wondering.
To me, almost like a separate issue, because wrestling's something and then online's, uh, seats are something.
Yeah, but I mean, we need to look at it, you know, real.
We weren't charging them that, yeah, we were charging them.
Right, right. If we're going to do, like, my understanding when we started that part of it, is we had something to return, it wasn't just, here you go.
Right.
And we get nothing back.
And right now, we're getting nothing back.
Right, if we're giving up something like in that position, then, especially when this came up, and I called it, we haven't even had an agreement on that yet.
Right.
And if that, if that's the case, then we need to make changes on that. But I think Joel was right, I think the way it sounded to me, like.
I mean, I was surprised they allowed us, were going to allow us to be.
Part of the.
Part of the interview section on their head coach, which is pretty, pretty, pretty impressive.
Yeah, when Ben, he was saying that, yeah, I don't, he said, I think, if we're going to go down this path and share it, there should be somebody from you guys as part of.
Which, which is fair.
Mm-hmm.
And I would assume our coach wouldn't be acceptable to them too.
Right.
Right.
Be interviewed and.
And I, I thought it was weird that that wasn't the case.
Yeah, you know, and, so I thought the, the review process went well, the only sticking point was, uh, he wanted to write up for both, but then I think we could talk him into saying, they're different.
Yeah, because.
Like you just said, they're different, they're not, the participation in those other, other sports that there is in the wrestling piece. And then we talk about, you know, this separately, but then we would come back and say, now we want to talk about the online school too, or.
Because that doesn't make any discretion either.
My concern is that, um, we're really going to have to, I think wrestling is fine, but I think that soccer and gymnastics, we might end up not being able to offer them to our students at all.
Unless we say.
Unless we have a number.
Unless it's incidental and we say that we're allowed to do the soccer and the gymnastics for those online classes. So there is kind of a mutually beneficial way of looking at it.
If that's, yeah.
How many people use our online up there, do you know?
Yes, 13 Caledonia students enrolled first semester, 21 second semester, and each class is valued at $532.85. So therefore, right now, they're getting a value of $23,489.40. So, I'd like to.
I agree, we, we can negotiate now.
Well, we were using it for, um.
Well, ag and.
Ag and FFA.
But they're not offering ag down here, right?
Well, they.
The one ag class that our kids could have enrolled in is the college and the school's ag, but it wasn't given it.
The problem is, that is, yeah, the problem is we didn't, the time, as far as availability and the class schedule that they have and this class schedule that we have don't mirror each other and that's, so.
Well, and also the other, that, that teacher, the other classes that he's offering are ag shop classes, so it's welding, we already have that here, it's, it's all the stuff that we have in industrial tech that our kids already have.
I mean, we need to step back and, like Joe said, look at it as two separate entities, if we're going to go this way, then we need to.
They could offer the FFA program though, right, I mean, they, so the kids could be in FFA.
Kids aren't allowed to compete in FFA unless they are taking an ag class.
They can, up to a certain level.
Well, what they'd have to do, Joe, is their class up there that they provide would have, the timelines would have to change.
Okay.
So, and I think they may or may not understand the value of what we're providing to them.
Right.
And if they do, then we need to say, well, here's the bill of the mail.
So I think it was the first meeting, but we.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
I mean, all in all, it went okay.
We just didn't talk about much more than wrestling.
No.
Well, that's the biggest entity that we're involved with them in, so it's almost 50/50.
Yeah, it's actually 60/40 this year.
Yeah, exactly, some years it goes one way or the other, so.
And actually, our seven wrestlers are almost all wrestling, diversity.
That's, I mean, we got a big piece of the puzzle already, so. And it's gone well and I appreciate that they were willing to have us at the table.
Yeah.
So, as far as put a coach hire name and all that stuff.
But I, I, they're, we're going to have work to do to.
Yeah, I think that, that should be okay.
So currently with the soccer players that are participating in Caledonia, what, what agreement are they?
They, uh, whatever it costs them to, to provide that is what they prorate back down to the individual, right?
Right, so the individual students are paying the fees to participate.
Well, I think this last year for soccer, Caledonia charged the kids, was it 500?
No, he said 500.
Yeah, 500.
And so, and what this arrangement, what this arrangement said, there would be that prorated amount.
Plus.
Plus the school would have to spend, would have to give 1670 per sport, flat fee, plus each kid would spend, would give their user fee to Caledonia instead of your user fee coming to Houston.
And that goes to pay for Lates and Chanter and all the other overhead.
Who called this meeting, did we or did they?
They did.
They did.
They did?
They had some issues with some other sports and so they wanted to get everything in line, so.
So further discussion, I'm assuming you want to get back with them?
Yeah, we'll meet with them again.
But as part of this, we've historically asked Todd to weigh in on what are the students requesting.
Yeah.
You know, we've usually in the, in the spring said, do a survey, what are the students requesting? Because we've had students go to La Crescent for hockey too.
Correct, right.
So we need to find out what the, what the student body would like.
She usually comes up with a survey, don't you like?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so.
Yeah, he does.
And, and I know that's not a absolute, it's just an, you know, interest inventory, but at least you get an idea of whether there are a bunch that want to do it.
Has Todd looked at that, that we got?
Oh, yes, yeah, he thought it was out of line.
But could he do a survey?
Oh, sure.
I mean, before.
Yeah.
Because we, we both know our arrangement with Rushford and that, instead of paying this and this and this, it's just, they figure out the full cost of the program for track, they divide that by the number of kids in track and then we pay for those kids that were Houston kids.
Yeah, so I think, you know, with this, since we have surrounding school districts that offer different elective, different sports, that we should, whenever the decision is made, you got to be aware of, well, what are we doing with La Crescent? What are we doing with Rushford, so what are we doing with Caledonia? So that, just so you're aware of it, not that it.
And we, we brought it up at the meeting last night, the way we're working with Rushford, and I, to be honest, I thought the way we worked with Rushford on that, and Joe, you can speak up and maybe you go over there, it seemed pretty fair, because I think if they, and it sounds like they put all the costs together, you know, they said that they had all their costs put together on the sports, you know, whether it be from the AD costs all the way through to the lighting and all the other stuff, and they divided it up and this is what it cost.
Oh, my question when I looked at that was, are they paying for their, their sports, you know?
Well, yeah, well, that's what my question is.
I, a lot of times you don't make money on sports, on some sports, and they're acting like they're making money or breaking even by what they're charging, and I don't know that they're, and I realize they get property taxes and all that up there too, but, um, you know, come on, no.
Well, you don't want to be paying for their personnel.
Right, and that's what I brought up, because I said, our athletic director does have to put the schedule online for wrestling, our athletic director does have to field questions for wrestling.
And I do like the way Rushford does it, if this, okay, the, it costs $20,000 or $5,000 or whatever it is for the sport, you have X amount of kids and you divide it out, kind of go that way. That seems the fairest, and if they want to include extra cost, you know, put it on the table and show me, show me the numbers.
Yeah, I guess, we, we throw in the cost of the coach, subtract, subtract out that, see where we're at.
And I, I would have provided the numbers, but Ben didn't get the numbers back to me today as far as the cost of wrestling.
Yeah, because he's, okay, well, once that comes in, we'll.
I, as soon as I get that, I will, you know, and I'll.
And I, I think it, working with Caledonia is kind of a bonding, because both the guys over there were on their negotiating committee, you know, so it's, it's interesting, you know, the topics you talk about, though.
And I, I enjoy working with neighboring districts and I think the more we can work with neighboring districts, the better, but I, I want it to be good for both sides.
Fair and equitable.
And, and right now, to be honest, that plan is, is rather parasitic.
So, more.
Yeah.
More, um, more to come. So.
And then future agenda items, March 2nd, would you like the, at the finance cabinet, or the finance committee meeting to have, we've got, we went out for RFPs for auditors, would you like to have audit firms come in and give presentations on what they can do for us?
Can they give, just give us a brochure?
Instead of talking to us?
That one wants to come in, right?
One, yeah, yeah.
So I think if you're going to hear one, you should offer the.
Offer them all.
Offer them all to hear what they have to say, whether it makes a difference or not, I mean, if.
Have one offering, you might as well just throw it on the table. Five?
Sounds riveting. Well.
And so we.
Educational.
Yeah, Josh, you should come to that, you'll learn a lot.
You're.
How different are those going to be, what are they going to offer, it's not like it's a, you know?
Basically, it comes down to two things, one is, uh, there'll be, I believe the one that's currently working with them would probably be the most reasonable price, because they don't have a lot of.
Research to do.
Right, they've got that done.
They've already done it three years in a row, and, you know, so, I mean, they provide a, a financial statements that are audited and.
How many Brussels are on a fine tooth comb or what?
Are you suggesting that finance committee meet with them or the whole board?
Just, just finance committee and then the finance committee, because I wouldn't make.
No, no.
I didn't want to make the entire audience sit through presentations by all the audit.
And then anybody who wants to come, can, anybody who wants to come.
Make them dance.
So you're volunteering to be there, right?
All five in one meeting?
Make it a cage match.
Well, maybe if all of them do, you have to schedule a couple of meetings.
Right, if all five want to, then we'll schedule, we'll schedule a couple of meetings.
If they can't come, a brochure is sufficient.
Right, well, they've already submitted the RFP.
Okay.
So, um, they've already submitted their proposals, so if they don't want to do an in-person.
They're fine with it.
Dog and pony, they're fine with the proposal.
Exactly, okay, anything else you could?
No, that's it.
Can I, I just want to let everybody know that the robotics team has a scrimmage this weekend and usually it's in lacrosse at, um, on Alaska School, but this year it's in Caledonia. And Saturday they'll be prepping and it starts Sunday at noon, and so it's the challenge, but it's built out of wood, so they have volunteers and kids that have kind of built all these towers and all the wood and everything. So, um, it's very close, so if anybody's available. And then their regional is in lacrosse this year too, right, right before Easter's over.
Nice.
Um, spring break, so, you know, hit up whichever one, but it'll be fun.
Caledonia Elementary or High?
I believe it's at the high school.
Okay.
So, and it should be interesting, they're always free, all those events, so.
Thank you.
What time does it start on Sunday?
12 o'clock, I think it starts. So it'll be interesting, because it'll be the schools all around here, but then there'll be some other schools from a little bit further that we'll come to, so.
Okay, anybody else have anything to add?
Oh, are they going to, so Wendy, is, if finance committee meeting is next, is online, has online schools committee met? And are they, are you going to? There were some things raised with the SWOT analysis that I was hoping that maybe.
Yeah, Angelo seemed to have a lot on her mind.
Well, I mean, I don't know if that's even appropriate, but I'm just wondering when the last time, when you, if you're going to meet.
Who else, is that me or who else?
Do you got thoughts when you want to meet, from mine?
Um, I thought it was in the schedule, I thought it was, they were both coming up pretty soon.
Right, but then you also said that you didn't want to be locked into the schedule, you wanted to be able to.
Add more, yeah.
So.
Do you want to look at the next date that we have scheduled, I don't know right off the top of my head.
I think it might be the 16th of March.
March? Is that soon enough?
Um. I don't, a part of me thinks we can meet right away and then the other part of me thinks if we're, that the strategic planning might set us, more direction from that might give us more direction, so I'm not, I'm open to either way.
When are we meeting again, strategic planning?
We're trying.
Night.
So we'll have met before that 16th anyway.
That might be a good, I.
Which may be fine.
The 16th?
Yeah.
But that's a good point, she had her own set of issues, or discussion points.
I, that, right, you just go those.
No issues, no problems. Okay, anything else anyone want to bring up? Okay, you have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
Say, McGarry, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you all for coming.
Here's your stuff, maybe now, ten months.
Maybe who else is with?